The agenda meeting for Bossier City's council regular meeting is this Thursday, March the 5th, 2019. It is 3:00 PM exactly. We will have the call to order invocation by Councilmember Scott Irwin and a pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Thomas Harvey.
Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day that you've given us, Lord. Lord, we thank you for the Parkway team being here today and for blessing them with their success. Lord, we pray for those in our community who are sick, Lord, or those who are hurting. We pray for wisdom, Lord, for our nation, for our state, and for us in this city council meeting today. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Please join me in our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, roll call.
Mr. Montgomery?
Here.
Mr. Larkin?
Here.
Mr. Irwin?
Here.
Mr. Darby, absent. Mr. Free?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Harvey?
Here.
All right, I need a approved amendments of the February 19th, 2019, regular meeting and dispense with a reading.
So moved. Second.
First by Councilman Scott Irwin, second by Councilman Williams. Please cast your vote.
Oh, my, my, uh, thing's not there. Is that you? There we go. Thanks.
Okay, council, we have two add-ons today. The first one will be number 15 under new business. A resolution to promote from within the traffic engineering Division II traffic control lead technicians and hire one traffic control technician.
I move we add that to the agenda.
Do we need, we can't do them both at once individually? Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, I've got a first by Councilman Irwin and a second by Councilman Larkin. Any questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote.
The second item will be number 16 under new business. Approved report of change order number two for the reservoir fence replacement project for an increase of $4,747.31. Total cost of contract with increase $413,628.52.
I move we add this item to the agenda.
Second.
First by Councilman Irwin, second by Councilman Larkin. Are there questions from the audience on this item? All right, guys, please cast your vote.
Can I make a motion? We approve the agendas as amended?
Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Harvey. All right, ceremonial matters and recognition of our special guest today. We have the Parkway wrestling team with us today.
Council, we are very fortunate to have the Parkway High School team. The Parkway has always had a great wrestling team and they recently completed and then they're losing a high school athletic association conference and did exceptionally well and three of them were state champions. So, as you know, this is the killer here. He was a wrestler way back when. And for our guest, you young gentlemen, Councilman Williams is also on the sports commission for the city. So, if I call your name, if you could come up individually and just start stacking up across here and you presented a copy of this proclamation, it reads as follows. Bossier City has been represented with distinction by standout team of Bossier Parish students and their outstanding coach Emmett Beggs. The group of athletes took first place as a team in Division II at the LHSAA State Wrestling Championship Tournament. And aware as the members of the 2019 LHSAA Division II Wrestling Championship teams are, now we'll call your names. In the 106-pound category, Josh Keeler, state runner-up. If you would, Josh. Grandson to Dale. Oh, come on. Son to Dale, grandson to Kathy. And next is in the 113-pound category, Jordan Clark, fifth place, Jordan. And the 120-pound, 120-pound, Trey Fontenot, state champion. 126-pound category, Darryl Nicholas, state champion. And 132-pound, Brandon Turner, sixth place, Brandon. 138-pound, Jacob Chittum, third place. 145-pound, Hayden Wood, fifth place. 152-pound, Stephen Driggers, fifth place. 106-pound, Caleb Garcia, state runner-up. 170-pound, Carson Sanders, state runner-up. 182-pound, Terrence Murray, fourth place. 195-pound, Peyton Miller, state qualifier. 220-pound, Connor Collinger, state champion. And last, 285-pound, Dez Elop, I don't know if I pronounced that correctly or not, close enough, Montgomery, state runner-up. Now, therefore, I, Lorenz Walker, Mayor of the city of Bossier City, along with the city council of Bossier City, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, March 5th, 2019, as LHSAA State Wrestling Champions Day in Bossier City, Louisiana, and I ask all the citizens to join with us in this worthy observance. So, one more round of applause for these. We can take your seats now and we'll have three more to call up individually.
Counsel, uh, we didn't, they didn't only have individual champions, this was a state team, the team title also. This was their second year in a row they won the team title.
Oh, that's really great.
Yeah.
All right, cool. And, uh, we'd like to ask the following individuals to step forward. Mr. Connor Collinger, is that close? Mr. Trey Fontenot. I'll give you this. And Coach Emmett Beggs, it's three great state champs and their great coach, and we'll ask the coach if he's got any words he'd like to share with us.
These are the individual champions in their weight class. Coach, this is a great company.
Um, it's being a part of this program, it's something special for all of us. I have Coach Terry out here today, he's one of my many assistant coaches. Being able to coach these boys is a lot of fun and be able to have those guys help me out makes my job a lot easier. These guys put forth a lot of effort. We travel almost every weekend. We didn't go to day of school on Fridays for two months. I think that's kind of a perk, but we've already started working toward next year. We've already planned on going next year, back to Florida and Tennessee and Alabama and well as around the state. So, uh, we lose four great guys for next year, but I think we'll be able to reload and give another shot.
Thought you'd give us an exhibition.
Yeah, right.
Thought you could take the 220 guy.
Way too old. Nothing but a dream now.
Adopt and ordinance appropriating $6,555.40 from the 2019 Alternative Fuel Station Fund balance for necessary upgrades to the E85 fuel pumps. Final reading?
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Irwin and a second by Councilman Larkin. Are there questions from the audience on this agenda item? Questions from the council?
Adopt and ordinance to install a water main to an existing irrigation meter located at the La Crosse apartment complex. The existing irrigation meter being reconfigured as required by ordinance 63 of 2017. The total cost of this project is $30,000 to come from the Water Capital Contingency Funds. Final reading?
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Larkin. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council?
Adopt and ordinance to appropriate funds to cover construction costs for the Central Plaza Sewer Lift Station Improvement Project for a total of $165,300 to come from the 2016 LDEQ loan CS221103-02 fund. Final reading?
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Irwin. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Adopt and ordinance appropriating $88,000 from the Public Services and Sanitation Fund for two Laborer One employees for the Street Sweeping and Grass Cutting Division. Final reading?
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Harvey. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Adopt and ordinance appropriating $1.5 million from the 2018 LCDA bond issue to widen the underpass at Swan Lake Road in I-220. Final reading?
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Montgomery, second by Councilman Larkin. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council?
Adopt and ordinance to abandon a portion of Green Acres Boulevard, which was originally dedicated in volume 1601, page 92 of the Records of Bossier Parish, and which is located in Section 8 Township 18 North, Range 13 West, Bossier Parish, Louisiana. Final reading?
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Harvey, second by Councilman Williams. Questions from the audience?
Pam, you got a hard copy of the agenda? Somebody needed it, huh?
I've got the hard copy there. We just can't vote until I can get it back up.
Can we vote man, uh, voice? Why don't we do that, Mr. President?
All right.
All right, so who made the motion in the second for that one?
First was Councilman Harvey, second was Councilman Williams. There were no questions from the audience? No questions from the council?
Okay. Back up.
Please cast your vote. That completes our old business. Ready for new business when you are.
Witness opening of sealed bids for bid number D01-19, 1016 Hamilton Road demolition.
Somebody.
It's coming. I had to reload everything.
I understand. And it...
Counsel, this is city-owned property. It's a demolition of the structure is required to clear right-of-way for the water treatment plant, transmission main project, and the Walter OBB Carriage Way project. There were two addendums. The first one was the date of the mandatory meeting at the demo site, and the second one was questions and answers and a list of the attendees to the non-mandatory meeting. Excuse me, it was non-mandatory. The first bid did not acknowledge the addendum, so we're going to have to reject it. So, that's the length in construction. The next bid did not acknowledge both addendums, so it is also disqualified.
Who's that?
That is...
Lou Chandler.
The third bid acknowledged the addendums and the bid bond is included. It is from Sims, Inc. The amount is $25,157.25157.00. The next bid, they acknowledged the addendum, the bid bond's included. It is from Strong's Construction. It's for $26,130.26130.00. I ask that you approve the reading of these bids.
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Larkin. Please cast your vote.
Hearing of appeal for Patrick Lynn Harper, 2422 River Street, Bossier City, Louisiana, 7111, for violation of City Ordinance Section 14, vicious and dangerous dog.
Hello, council, I know there's a couple of you who haven't introduced myself to. My name's Dale Keeler. I'm a superintendent in public works and I'm over mosquito and herbicide control along with animal control. And it doesn't appear as, uh, Mr. Harper's here today. If there's anything you'd like me to go over about the case?
What happened? I mean, I, we didn't, usually we give the stack paperwork.
It's in your...
Oh, man, it's in the computer.
Technology's great, isn't it?
I gotta go find it.
Well, I have an extra copy if you'd like.
Ah, that's fine.
Okay. Well, what happened was there was a mail carrier trying to deliver mail to 2420 River Street. The actual owner of the house was inside, did not want to come outside because there was dogs running loose. The mailman backed into his yard, into his driveway, got out. When he was trying to turn to his truck, the dog approached him. Came between him and the mail truck and bit him on the foot, bit him on the shoe. Luckily, he had a steel-toed shoe on and took him to the ground. Lucky he didn't, uh, the dog didn't continue his attack because he could have got to his neck or head area. He's a pit bull. After that, he left. The dog went back to his owner's house, which is next door 24, 22, 2422 River Street, excuse me, and, uh, they called animal control. We came out, when our animal control officer got there, she approached the house and was approached by two dogs from the backyard, and she called for backup since there were two animals. We apprehended the animals and then took them to animal control and then did the investigation from there.
So, we declared them vicious?
No, dangerous.
To put them to sleep or just so they're, are you going to put them down or you going, they got to go through this?
Well, but this deemed dangerous, they're allowed to get the dog back if they pay the fines.
Yeah.
Uh, we've had them since February, February the 1st. They were available to come get the fines immediately, as long as, uh, come get the dog immediately, as long as they can and pay the fines and fees, and they have not done so.
I think her request was simply that she said she saw no evidence that the mail carrier was actually bitten.
Right, well, as you can see in the pictures, there was pictures on there. It's slight, it's hard to see because it's a black shoe, but he did puncture the shoe. Like I said, luckily, he had a steel-toed boot prevented the dog from actually doing any damage.
The chihuahua was taken strictly because it was...
It was running at large.
Running at large, okay. Has, has either dog been picked up at the pound?
No, we have, uh, actually tried to contact them several times. The chihuahua was, was not part of the dangerous dog declaration, so he was free to go back without that declaration. All she had to do was pay the running at lar, running at large fee. They have not done so. So, therefore, by law, the dog was running at large. We have it in our possession. For three days, the dog becomes ours. Just recently, uh, we've had it for, like I said, since February the 1st. We have a lot of animals at animal control overcrowded, but we can't house people's animals for them. So, we ended up putting it up for adoption. I believe it got adopted Saturday, the little, small chihuahua. The big dogs, since I knew it was going to the meeting today, we held off on anything until that, this meeting.
What can, what can you do with that, though? I mean, you can't adopt that.
Really can't, can't adopt it out, no, sir.
So, they just, the, you called them up or whatever it was and they just disappeared, huh?
Yes, sir. We've actually put notices on their door, told them to come by. She actually called me. I told her, listen, come get the dog. We're only going, the, the fee was, at one time was like $127 at the time. We told her, just come pay $50, just come get your dog out. It doesn't need to be here, it can get sick here, you know, it stays in a, the shelter's not a good place for healthy animals to be. There's a lot of dogs coming in and out and there's, don't know where they come from. There could be a lot of illnesses that we don't know about and parvo and those type diseases can run rampant, rampant. So, um, we called and tried to ask her, left her a note. She did call me back and I called her, uh, no, told her, just come get your dog, get at least the little one, and, uh, nothing. The fact they haven't even been back, um, to see the animals at all.
What, do you need a motion?
I guess to, to go ahead and...
To uphold animal controls.
Uphold the declaration of being declared dangerous.
Yes, I make the motion, we uphold the animal controls recommendation.
First by Councilman Montgomery, second by Councilman Williams. Questions from the audience?
Incoming.
Any other questions from the audience?
What's me?
Think that was...
Y'all didn't take care of me with that, did you?
Make sure that was God chiming in.
The dog would have been alive.
How he feels about it, so I'm going to change my vote.
I'm voting no.
All right, there's no additional questions. Do we have a vote?
No, we haven't.
Y'all have a vote.
Oh, go. Cast your, wow, cast your vote.
It's when they hit the switch.
It's doing that because Jamie's here.
I don't know.
Mr. Free, did you vote?
Yeah, I did.
Thank you.
Adopt and ordinance to declare that an emergency did exist in the city of Bossier City which affected property, public health, and safety due to the requirement for procurement and installation of chemical boosting stations for the water treatment plant at a cost of $700,000 to come from the Water Capital Contingency Funds. First and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Irwin, second by Councilman Larkin. Questions from the audience on this agenda are? Council, questions?
Introduce an ordinance to appropriate $500,000 to come from the Riverboat Gaming Capital Fund to be used to pay for shed road construction cost overruns, various change orders, and to supplement engineering design. First reading?
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Montgomery, second by Councilman Larkin. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council?
Introduce an ordinance establishing regulations, fees, and procedures for street performers by enacting Section 22-2 through 22-11 of the Bossier City Code of Ordinances. First reading?
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Harvey, second by Councilman Williams. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of one Laborer One for the Public Works Department. First and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Larkin. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of a utility worker for the lift station division of the Public Utilities Department due to a promotion. First and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Larkin. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the replacing of a maintenance mechanic in the garage. First and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Larkin, second by Councilman Irwin. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of one fire department line employee to replace a position due to retirement. First and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Larkin. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Approve the reappointment of John Mark Robertson and Billy Jordan to the E911 Board. Appointments effective March 1st, 2019 through March 1st, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Larkin, second by Councilman Williams. Are there any questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Approve parade permit fee waiver for Walk With La Crosse, April 19th, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Irwin, second by Councilman Harvey. Questions from the audience? Council, cast your vote.
Approve change order number, change order first and final for the 2018 citywide concrete repairs, an increase of $24,227.42. Total cost of contract with change order, $999,977.42.
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Harvey, second by Councilman Williams. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote. Cast your vote.
Approve change order first and final reading for 2018 asphalt street program, an increase of $3,748.46. Total cost of contract with change order, $392,752.46.
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Irwin, second by Councilman Larkin. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of a Laborer One for Parks and Rec Recreation. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Larkin. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council?
Adopt a resolution to remote from within the Traffic Engineering Division, two Traffic Control League technicians, and hire one Traffic Control technician. First and final reading.
So moved. Second.
First by Councilman Larkin, second by Councilman Irwin. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Approve report of change order number two for the Reservoir Fence Replacement Project for an increase of $4,747.31. Total cost of contract with increase, $413,628.52.
So moved. Second.
First by Councilman Larkin, second by Councilman Irwin. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote. Yeah, Larkin.
Okay, he was looking.
You voted before I told you to vote.
You do what? I do every time. I've seen it happen before. Are these really people?
All right, announcements, Mayor.
Just informational, we'll be losing one of our department heads. Kathy Davidson Civic Center will be retiring in a couple of months and we'll start the process of looking for a replacement.
Ben, can I ask you a question? Y'all worked on the fire and I see you had to cut into the street some. Do y'all pass that like a workroom to Gary or...
No, we have an internal contract where we do, call it routine pavement maintenance for things like that, so...
There's another one right down, right down the street from that.
There's a lot of them. Once we get the ground prepped and dry, we, we get the work scheduled and then go out there and have them place the contract. RVP does that for the city.
Yeah, they've been working a lot over there. Mayor, I want to thank, I see Ms. Curl up there, you for making all those awards. Thank you. And I want to recognize Phyllis, being this weekend, there's a Louisiana Municipal Clerks Association, and she's gonna be sworn in as president of the association, so she's climbed to the top now. Congratulations, Phyllis. Excellent. That's all I got.
Any other announcements from the council?
Monday.
Monday, we have the groundbreaking for the Walter O. Bigby Parkway.
Carriage Way.
I knew that. It's gonna be at the...
At the Police Department Center, 1549 East Texas.
That's what I was looking for, 1549 East Texas.
11 a.m. 10 a.m.
At 10 a.m. I hope to see all your smiling faces there. Any other announcements? Jimmy, nothing? Meeting adjourned.
It's kinda early, you know?